She didn't say there was anybody just making certain things.
It's what most of them are.
He wants to give a thousand dollar scholarship in memory of his classmate Danny Joe Miller.
I don't know, it's just didn't wake up. Uh, because that's actually the weekend.
I just actually, I just saw her here lately.
Oh, yeah. She had a wait. What do we agree to? I'm outsourcing it. I'm outsourcing it. I got another, I got another group coming in. Got another group coming in? I'm gonna get an Adidas sponsorship and Gatorade promotion. Listen, it'll, it'll pay if I have to.
I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order, thank everybody for attending, and ask Chief Cage if you were all for our invocation.
Father God, we're coming to you, we thank you for this beautiful day we've had, God, we thank you for the many blessings you give us, we ask you to be with our council tonight as they make decisions affecting our city, but most of all, we're thankful for your son, Jesus, in the precious name of prayer, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, don't forget to silence your phones, as I forgot to ask you to do so. And let's start at the beginning. As items of community interest, I'd like to make everybody aware of the City of Bowie's light up the night, is it light up the night? I can't remember. Anyway, it's fundraiser for the Bowie Community Development Board, which is trying to earn enough money to buy new city lights for all the downtown buildings. It's April the 27th. April the 29th is a golf tournament sponsored by The Chamber, April the 15th is Shred-a-thon, that's this Saturday at Wellington State Bank. And that's all I can think of right off the top of my head. Oh, oh, the, the.
Murder mystery.
Turn on your. Sorry.
The murder mystery play with the Bowie Alliance for Education of the Arts, and it's on the 28th and 29th.
28th and 29th, Friday and Saturday night. Terry, do you have anything to add?
I have nothing to add.
And find your local Rotarian, because they're selling raffle tickets for the scholarship fund. All right, well, let's move on to the city manager's report.
I've told you before, but I'm applying for a grant which may or might, it may not be successful for our electric system. After sitting through two webinars, I thought that we did not qualify for the grant program because it was for cities with a population of 35,000 or more. I sat through another webinar the other day from the U.S. Department of Energy, and there's a section of the grant is that is for smaller cities. The grant is termed Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. And it's intended, it's titled for efficiency and conservation. I don't know if our application will be considered efficient and conservation centered, but we will slam that direction. I'm planning on asking for a new transformer for a substation and some wire conductor enhancements on the south side of town in order to feed our system bidirectionally. I might apply for some solar array money, efficiency, and maybe some money for electrical vehicle charging. They tend to like that kind of stuff at the federal government. If I do not apply for, if I do apply for solar and vehicle charging, I will need some input from the council on that. That's not due until June, so I've still got a couple of months to work on. On March 29th, Stoney and I met with a firm called Nexco, N-E-X-C-O. They have a process in which they analyze pavement with photo and high-tech equipment. In order to get our business, they offered to analyze five miles of our streets for free. Stoney has given them a list of several streets for the analysis. They go through, take pictures, and use their equipment to figure out if, you know, what wrong with the street, what kind of shape it's in, and what it might need in the future. The streets include Lindsey Street from Wythe Street to Highway 59, South Mill Street at the high school, from the high school to Decatur Street, North Mill Street from Wythe Street to Highway 59, Tarrant Street from North Mill Street to Rock Street, Nelson Street from Pelham Street to North Mill Street, Wilbarger Street from Highway 59 to FM 1125, Zahara Street from Nelson Street to El Dorado, Lower's Lane from Highway 59 to Matthew Street, and Roque Street from Patterson to North Mill Street. When they're doing the analysis, we will make sure that the public is aware of what's going on. There'll be, on those thoroughfares, there'll be some, you know, slow traffic and whatnot. They typically stay on just one side of the road, so they, they shouldn't interfere, but somebody might pull up behind them and stuff like that. This first batch of it is not costing us anything, so it's a good sales technique, we think. Anyway, we'll get this free analysis done. That's all I have for the last couple of weeks, anybody have any questions?
On the street analysis, what do you hope to, I mean, what are they trying to tell you? Because I mean, I could drive down some of those streets and tell you pretty good analysis.
Well, the photos and stuff, they'll, they'll tell you, like, you've got potholes here and there and stuff, and, you know, it's like a pothole this week that cropped its ugly head. Nobody had reported, we didn't know it was there. Barbara just told me about it, and we had somebody fall in it this morning to do some, so that kind of analysis is what it'll be. Potholes, and they'll look at the surface to see if it's spider crack, to see if we need to do anything about it, that even though the street looks in good shape, we might need to do what they call, I'm trying to think of a word, but where they seal coat it without anything else, and that'll take care of the spider cracking and save the streets. But they'll give us some good information, and I'll share it with y'all as soon as we get it.
Okay. Do you have any idea when that is?
No. Stoney just sent the map to them and the list last week, I guess, the end of last week, so.
Does Nexco, do they just evaluate streets, or they are paper?
No, they, they just evaluate streets.
On the, the grants and the, the one you're talking about, energy efficiency, is that one that's just, here's 100% of the money, or is it kind of a mix of, we need to be putting up X amount of dollars, or?
Most of the time, federal grants have a 20% match. So, you know, it all depends. There's some grant, in fact, I was talking with the mayor the other day, there was a grant that I, that was available from, from TechDoc for building sidewalks. And our match to build the sidewalks that I want to build, it was well over $3 million, and our grant, match grant was $600,000. And I said, we don't have $600,000 to.
A lot of sidewalk.
To do that, and sidewalks is not a priority item, so I'll wait till next year or the next year before I apply for that grant. A lot of times, you've got to make that decision as you go, so, because you don't, you know, that's not a number one item on our to-do list, so.
All right, any more questions? If not, let's move on to the next item for the consent agenda. You should have received the minutes for the March 27th meeting. Now, but entertain a motion to accept as presented.
I'll make a motion.
Kristy, do I have a second?
Second.
Stephanie? Shaw?
Yes.
Gunner?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sproles?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Any old business anybody want to discuss? If not, we'll move on to the new business, and the first item on that list is to accept the 2021-22 audit from Mathis Weston Hough Funds. Welcome back, Valerie.
Thank you. It's a little tall for me.
Yeah.
Not that tall. Well, thanks for having me here tonight, I'm here to go over the audit that we just completed, which is for the year ended September 30th, 2022. I'm gonna run through and hit the highlights fairly quickly, but please feel free to stop me if you have any questions or would like to go over anything in more detail, I'd be happy to do so. Overall, the audit went well, the, kind of the bigger thing that we had this year, there was a big new accounting standard that we had to implement for leases, which the city holds a lot of leases, enterprise vehicle leases, the fleet. And so that is now considered an asset and a liability on the book, so we had to kind of go in and value that, which is just, anytime there's a first-time standard, that's a little bit tougher, but that was kind of our, maybe our biggest challenge. Other than that, we had a, you know, we really appreciated Pam and her team and all the work that they put into it. We'll go through the compliance section, but we had previously reported a segregation of duties finding that, that dropped off this year. So I know that Pam worked really well, the whole team worked really hard to get that, so we're excited to report that. And other than that, I'll just kind of flip through and point out some of the numbers and the sections, and if you'll have any questions, like I said, just feel free to stop me, and I'll try to give you more detail. I'll start on numbered page one, which is the report that's on our letterhead, that is our independent auditor's report, and it, this is where we provide our opinion on the financial statements. It says that we believe the financial statements were fairly presented in all material respects, which is what we call an unmodified opinion, and as I like to say, is as nice as we get as auditors, that's what you want to see. If you have paid attention to these, you'll notice that this format is a little bit different, the paragraphs are in different order than previous reports, that's another standard change. It says primarily the same thing, added a little more detail and moved the paragraphs around, but again, this is our standard unmodified opinion. Past that goes into the management's discussion and analysis section, starting on numbered page three. And this is where there's a little bit more of a conversational look at the results of the year. And I like to point this out because there is some comparative information in here, so I'll point you to page five. The schedule on the bottom of page five is the city's net position. So, and you'll note that this says that it was restated, and again, that is for those lease standards. So the city has about, about 30 vehicles that are leased through enterprise, maybe a little less than that, but around there. And those are valued at the net present value of future payments, and so we put both an asset and a liability on the books beginning of the year, that are then kind of amortized as it's paid down. And that resulted in an increase in both assets and liabilities of about $408,000 for last year in the governmental activities and $187,000 in business-type activities. And that's offsetting, so there's not a difference to net position, but they're on there now and they're new this year. So overall, the city's net position was about $31 million, almost $500,000 compared to $29.9 million, so an increase of about $1.5 million from last year. And assets went up about $50 million for the city as a whole versus $48 million, so an overall increase, and liabilities were pretty comparable. Moving to page seven is your comparative information for your revenues and expenses and your change in, in net position. So the city's total overall revenues were $18.8 million versus $17.5 million last year. There are big increases in charges for services, which is that top line is about $14.6 million versus about $13.2 million, but also increases in property taxes and sales taxes for some just kind of increased activity. Overall, expenses were down a little bit, down about $400,000 from last year, about $17.3 versus $17.7 million. But as a reminder, in 2021, that's when that very large electric bill hit, so if we kind of took out the impact of that one big bill, then we would see that expenses also increase. That's just kind of that outlier in 2021 for that big winter storm. So overall, the city's net position increased 1.5 million versus a lot less than $1,000 last year. So those are kind of the highlights of the comparative information in the MDNA. If you're curious about the year, that has probably the most information to read through and is a little easier to understand, so I'd recommend reading that if you want to learn a little bit more and just have the discussion. So past that goes to the basic financial statements, starting on numbered page 11. So the, the first two statements in this section are for the city as a whole. It includes the governmental activities, which is your general fund, business-type activities, which is utility, water, sewer, electric, and then it totals in that third column, and then we have the Bowie Economic Development Corporation and the Bowie 4B Corporation. And these two statements are the only place where you're gonna see those component units in here. Generally, this has the same information as the summarized data that we went over in the MDNA, but that's what's included here. And just to note, the BEDC ended up with a net position, which is the assets exceeding your liabilities of about $6.2 million, and 4B is $6.22 million, about $4,000, a little higher than BEDC, but very, very close for their ending net position for both of those. Pages 12 and 13 are your, this is called the statement of activities, so it shows your expenses, revenues, and your change in net position. This statement is a little unusual, if you're used to reading other financial statements, so I kind of like to walk through how it works. The first column is the expenses by department. So if we're looking at that first column, the, the first department is administration, and the expenses for administration are about $513,000 for the year. The next three columns then present direct revenues that can be kind of attributed to that, that department's work. So there were some charges for services from administration of $4,234 that, that then net against expenses. So then if you go over to page 13, staying in that same row, you'll see that the net cost of administration was $509,000, so that's your expenses less those direct revenues. And then you follow that down, you get to $5.3 million is the net cost of providing governmental activities. And again, what's in your governmental activities or anything that's in your general fund, your police, administration, public safety, ambulance, all that kind of stuff. So that was about $5.3 million. And then if you continue to follow that column down, we get to the general revenues, so that is revenues of the city that don't relate to any one department, but are used to just kind of fund the city's services as a whole, property taxes and all that. So your total general revenues and transfers from the utility fund are $5.9 million, which ultimately results in the increase in that position of governmental activities of $624,000. Business-type activities had an increase of about $880,000, which got to our total increase of $1.5 million that we've noted a couple of times. And then just to keep following that over, BEDC had an increase of $426,000 during the year, and 4B had an increase of $350,000. And so those two statements are the only places where it's the city combined as a whole. Past that, we go into the fund statements. So page 14 starts your governmental funds, which is just your general fund. The thing to kind of watch here is your fund balance, so in the general fund and governmental fund statements, it's a current asset and current liability focus, so you don't have long-term items on here. And one kind of item of note is your, it's just $3 million, and of that, $2 million, just over $2 million is unassigned. What you'd like to see in your unassigned fund balance in your general fund is three to six months of expenses, and you're right around there, you're around three, three-ish months. So that's a good healthy fund balance for what you'd like to see. Page 15 is a reconciliation that takes you from the governmental fund to the governmental activities. Page 16 then is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance just for your general fund. We have a lot of detail in here, which makes these numbers tiny. I'm sorry, need a magnifying glass for these. So if you look at the, the general fund, you have these, like, the, before other financing, other financing sources, you have a deficiency of revenues under expenditures of $1.8 million. That's because there was, the transfers are in the next section, so ultimately, your increase in fund balance is at $330,000. Page 17 then goes to your, just your reconciliation between the two statements. Page 18, 19, and 20 are your statements for the enterprise fund, which are on the same basis of accounting, it's just provided a little more detail, but kind of no, no new totals there, just a new presentation for it. Page 21 moves into your notes to the financial statements, so it just provides additional detail on the city's accounting policies. Again, we did implement that new lease standard this year, so that was a change in accounting policy, but that was the only significant change. Kind of.
What was the reason for the change? I mean.
It's a new Gatsby standard, I mean, that's the, they.
No reason for it, just?
Well, so in the past, so these big leases, and I think the city's a great example of this, there's a pretty big commitment that the city's made for these vehicle leases, and they were just paid as, you know, they were recognized as an expense as you went. There was a footnote disclosure that says, hey, we have committed to maybe three years of this lease, but it wasn't, there wasn't a long-term liability showing up for it. And so the standard-setting body felt like there was a liability that needed to be placed on the balance sheet to reflect that commitment.
That makes sense.
So that, that's kind of the idea behind it, but there is an offsetting asset, so it doesn't have a big, doesn't end up changing your net position very much, it just shows that liability that exists. Page 30 is, I know I kind of flipped through half the notes, but page 30 shows your capital assets. And kind of the activity there, and again, the leased equipment is a new line in there, so you'll see $408,000 beginning balance, and then plus $266,000 new leases in governmental. There also leased equipment in there in the past. And then moving to page 33, you'll see similar numbers with the new leases payable and the long-term liabilities, so the beginning balance is the same, there's a slight difference between the depreciation between the two, but not much. And then moving to page 37, but note H, is your pension plan, so this is the city's pension that they participate with TMRS for, and I just kind of like to point out the activity that's in here. Page 40 shows the, the change in the net pension liability, it actually went from a liability to an asset during the year. And just to kind of briefly explain how this works, so column A on this chart shows the total pension liability, so that's the actuarial estimation of what the City of Bowie will owe for the pension plan in the future. Column B is the assets that are held in the City of Bowie's name to pay for that liability in the future. So the total pension liability is $19.1 million, but the city has assets held at TMRS of $19.7 million that will be used to pay down that pension in the future. And the difference between that is, is an asset, so you have more asset than liability right now of $647,000. So that, at the end of last year, it was a liability of about $500,000. And a lot of that is due to just a, a pretty good net investment income year in 2021. That number will vary, so we'll kind of keep watching it, but the city really needs to continue to pay the TMRS rates as you have and have always planned to do, so, but just something to watch. But at the end of 2021, it was a pretty, pretty sizable asset. And those are kind of the highlights in the footnotes for me. Past that, page 45 is the budgetary comparison schedule. Overall, revenues were $660,000 higher than budgeted revenues, expenditures are about $101,000 higher than, than budgeted expenditures. But ultimately, the, the revenues, the excess of revenues made up for the excess in expenses. And then page 47, 48, and 49 are just a little more detail on the retirement plan. Then page 50 is the, the compliance, the report on compliance, so this is, we perform an audit in accordance with government auditing standards for the city, which means that we are required to report items that we believe are material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control, or any items of non-compliance that we find in the audit. We have one, and that is that we made material audit adjustments, which is something that is very, very common, and just some, these year-end closing entries to kind of convert things from kind of a cash basis or just a budget basis to a full accrual accounting. So that was the one finding, because we had, we did have adjustments, but there used to be, like I said, a segregation of duties finding here that we were happy to remove, so that is good news. And so those were the highlights in the bound report. The stapled letter that you also received pretty much says things that I've told you as we've walked through the report, there's nothing noteworthy, and the audit adjustments that we made are attached. And there are quite a few adjustments, we do make some smaller adjustments too, because while we're in there, we just feel like kind of getting it all to the, to the right number, but nothing too terribly significant. Does anybody have any questions or want me to go over anything in more detail?
It did seem like a lot of adjustments compared to the last two years.
I, I don't, I'll have to go back and look, but I, I don't know, I, I think that's, that's pretty, that's, that's pretty standard for.
Well, most of it's from the enterprise, am I right?
Gatsby 87.
Yeah, there are entries for the Gatsby 87, there are entries for, I mean, we still make entries for Gatsby 68 and Gatsby 75, which are pension and OPEB-related entries that we don't have any cities that make their own entries for that, we, we always make those. We make depreciation adjustments, just things like that, that are, that are really, that are really common.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Valerie? You know we'll go home tonight and think of 37 questions.
And you know how to reach me, if you do, you can call or email me anytime.
So would, do I have a council member that'd like to make a motion to approve the audit as presented?
I'd like a motion to pass as presented.
I'll have him first from Love, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Gunner? Sproles? Post?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
Gunner?
Aye.
And Love?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Valerie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam, for all the work you did and your group, I know that y'all sweat tears and bullets over this when you're putting it all together. Thank you, Valerie, be careful going home.
I will, thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda we have is a resolution 2023-16, a resolution approving the Bowie investment policy. Okay, who wants to make a statement to the council about this? You or Bert?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Good evening, council and mayor, there's really no changes in this investment policy. I believe that our monies, our funds are divided quite well, we do have three or four different investments that we work with, Tech Pool, Tech Star, Legend Bank, and currently, Jack Sparrow Bank. So our funds are spread equally, so in this economy, we feel safe and secure, and we ask the council for no changes at this time.
Great. All right, well, then I'm gonna ask for a motion.
This is someone we visit every year.
We have, we have to have a motion.
And we do, you do approve this, and there's no changes.
Laura's new, she hadn't, she hadn't been here in a while. So, all right, so let's entertain a motion to pass the resolution as presented.
So moved.
Gunner? Second?
Second.
Sproles? And Shaw?
With our, I guess our investments are, I would assume they're CDs with the, the local banks, would those be insured?
They are. They are, most of our funds are in a CD and/or banks, and we have several different pledges to the funds. different pledges to the funds over there, so they are insured.
Okay.
They have to pledge funds to ensure those.
Our monies are funds that are deposited.
When the interest rate started pulling up, we had some investments that were marginal at best.
Yeah, we transferred 1.3 million from Dallas Capital into a CD, which currently, within six months, we have, because of the interest rate, and you'd be happy to know, $15,000 off of that CD that we transferred at the right time.
Fantastic.
So is there a max on the insurance tab?
There is, just through a regular bank, yes, I believe it's 250,000, but ours is divided, and we have different pledge on our funds there, so it doesn't act like a regular personal account.
They split like a 1.3 billion dollar CD, they split it in 250,000 dollar increments, so.
Incidents.
So.
Yeah, I feel more secure about the CDs and then actual funds that we withdraw on for our banks and so forth to pay our debts, that's also pledged at different amounts from different entities, so if you look at our bank accounts, which is given to you quarterly, that is divided per pledges, so all the pledge just doesn't come from Legend Bank.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Gunner?
I think I read where it was.
Gunner?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Thank you.
In the future, I prefer us to have discussion before we make a motion.
Noted.
Thank you.
So, okay, so technically, that was a good, that was good, because we, we make a motion and can discuss it at that point, but I, I can understand your.
Good.
All right, so let's move on to the next item, which is approving the, setting of threshold amounts of capital expenditures and fixed assets, and this is something you might, you and I have been talking about for a year, isn't it? All right, so let Pamela explain to you what she wants to do.
Okay, first of all, I want to apologize for the journal entries that you just took a look at. Staff worked very hard, our main concern was on segregation of duties, there, I'm very proud of everyone involved in there. There's always room for improvements, we did hit a hiccup over the Gatsby eighty-seven with the leases, as you noticed this year in the budget, I segregated those all out, so hopefully next year, the journal entries will be a little bit lighter. No promises, but we do our best, okay? On this right here, right now, our threshold for capital expenditures on our fixed assets, $1,000 per policy, it's hard to put a value of the life of a piece of equipment for $1,000 to depreciate it out per se, and that's some of the journal entries that you took a look at tonight through your audit. We would like to up that to 5,000 per the Governmental Finance Officers Association threshold. It'll be easier on the department heads, it's hard to depreciate a air vial that costs $1,100. When I ask what's the life of it from the department head, they tell me it depends, it could be two years, five years, depending on the location it is put, depending on the weather, and the usage, and I'm like, okay. So that's why I'm asking to up that threshold to 5,000 for everybody involved.
Any questions for Pamela? So she and I have actually talked about this at great length, and she made her case a long time ago. So let's entertain a motion to accept this new policy from 1,000 to 5,000.
So moved.
So I don't have a, you're gonna have to take it, I don't have a voting page. So Jason makes a first, makes a motion, who, second?
Second.
Post makes a second. Hang on. Shaw?
Yes.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Gunner?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Bates? Thank you, thank you very much. Hey, and congratulations on that removal of the.
You did a good job, very proud.
All right, the next item on the agenda is resolution, I gotta find it. So some of these pages go on and on and on, I know, I'm trying to find it on my. Resolution 2023-15, excuse me, resolution of the city, council of the city of Bowie, Texas, authorizing the submission of Texas Community Development Block Grant Program, application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for Downtown Revitalization Program Fund.
This is a downtown revitalization grant that we've applied for, we applied for it a couple of years ago, and barely missed it, the reason we missed it is we didn't put enough emphasis on the thing that had to do with handicap accessibility and things, so, and we just barely missed the cutoff. Anyway, we applied last year, and that's when Nortech backed out of doing grant writing, and so I had to pretty much write it, and I had none, no experience whatsoever on block grants, so. Anyway, we changed companies to Public Management, who's our grant writer now for community development block grants, and we made application again for these, which, and it has to do from, with on Smythe Street, from Montague up as far, up Smythe Street, up the hill, as we can go with the money we get, so, and it'll be taking care of the streets, taking care of all the sidewalks on both sides of the street, as far as we can go, and there's some water lines in there that can probably use replacing and whatnot, if we can get enough money, we'll do that, so whatever we can do.
What's the dollar amount for these, and what's our obligation?
You don't know until you get it, but it's gonna be in the vicinity of half a million to 600,000 dollars.
Our obligation, or what?
Our obligation, probably 60 to 120,000.
So do we have a percentage set for whatever the obligation is?
Typically, they're 20%.
So those are 22.
Are we approving that as well tonight?
No.
Is that, I don't see that in this.
No, this is, this is just a resolution.
This is just a submit.
This is just giving him permission to make application.
Okay.
You can always turn down the grant if you want.
If you don't want to make application for it, I don't want to turn it down after we get it.
Understood.
So if you don't want to make application for it, we need to know now.
With the given information, I think I'm comfortable with it.
Because if you get a grant, if you win a grant, and then you turn it back, you probably won't get another one.
That is for sidewalks, handicap ramps.
Handicap accessibility of, yeah.
Just on Smythe?
Yeah, because they've already done the rest of downtown, on Mason Street, the handrails and all that, what it has to do with. They ran, ran out of money, Techstock ran out, ran out of money when they did the handrails and stuff, that go down to Y Street, going down the hill, so from Montague Street to Y Street, there's not any, except on the, I guess that would be the east side of the street, but on the other side of the street, they ran out of money, so we'll, that's where we'll concentrate on and get that done.
And Pam Barlow would really like sidewalks. I would really like to see her get a new sidewalk. So I'll entertain a motion to accept them.
For Pam's benefit, I'll say, I'll move.
You'll move?
Mm-hmm.
Brent, do I have a second?
My second.
Kristy? Gunner?
Aye.
Love?
Aye.
Post?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Sproul?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is a reappointment to the Parks Board. Your nominee or reappointment is Janet Moncries, her package, her information packet is in your packet?
I make a motion to accept that reappointment to the Parks Board for Janet.
Okay. Okay, we can open up discussion before the second, yes.
So guys, I think we need to reevaluate some of these folks on the Parks Board, so you'd like to see folks going in and out, coming back, and, has there been changes in there? I feel like if we possibly evaluate some of these, we might get some people in there that want to get in and maybe do something, so. That's my feelings, I'll see what anybody else says about it, so.
How many's on the Parks Board right now?
We've got four right now.
Four?
Yes, and they're, they're.
There's only one application in my packet.
They're looking for two more at least.
So what's their max, what's their max of board members?
Their max is 11, they like the comfort zone of seven.
What major achievements have we seen out of the Parks Board this last year, two years? It seems like there's more infighting than there is anything else.
I think that's where Jason's going with this, he'd like to see a new crew.
I could just assume no Parks Board, and I'd be just as happy with the current setup, it seems, but.
That has been a conversation. So the Parks Board is an advisory board, as you all know.
And we have yet seen any advisement on any things parks related in over two years.
That's constructive, you know, and they're fixing, I mean, they're fixing to have a lot of work they gotta have with these parks revitalized here in town, many parks coming up, all the ones being revitalized, I just want to see some fresh folks in there, and I think maybe if we, I mean, I appreciate what they've done, but I think maybe if we get some, like, just don't reappoint them, I think we, excuse me, I think we might have someone come in and fill their shoes that maybe wouldn't have beforehand.
Well, I also think, though, if we got someone that's interested in doing it, and we still got two more openings, that we do have that opportunity to get some more people in there, personally.
I'd like to say something on behalf of that Parks Board, because when I got elected to city council, you know, I was chair of that Parks Board, and we were working really hard towards revitalizing our parks, what parks we have, of course, we were focused over there on Kiwanis, which we couldn't have back, so we decided to turn our focus to the South Side Park and make it better. We were then pretty much told to stop our spending, because it needed to come to the council, and we needed to let it build up, you know, this sort of thing, and so it's just kind of been, I mean, I feel like the Parks Board was working pretty hard at the time, trying to do things that our hands were tied, and that's just where I stand, I wish the Parks Board was here to stand up with me here on this, but our hands have been tied for a while, everything that we had ideas for was shot down.
It wasn't by this council.
By who? Just in general, city?
The council did.
No, not by the public, no.
Jason, turn on your mic, please. So, and she's not wrong, I did tell them, because they were an advisory board, yeah, because they were an advisory board, that they did need to come to the council, because they are, as an unelected group, spending funds, or earmarking funds, so I like for the unelected group to be at, to fulfill their position as an advisory board.
And if you, if you go back and look, the funds that we were spending prior to that was on the community center, we were spending funds on the table, the new tables, the new chairs, you know, which we did come to you on that, prior to that, it was those containers to, for storage, I mean, I can go on and on on the things the Parks Board did to improve the Second Monday grounds, the community center grounds, that has been the focus, because that's the moneymaker.
Okay, so I hate to do this, but Sandy has brought something to my attention, the Parks Board's activity is not on our agenda, just the Parks Board appointment.
I just want to stand up on behalf of the Parks Board.
I understand that, but.
Based on Jason's.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, we can bring that back, put it on another.
We can put it on the agenda, yes.
I'm ready to.
So this is, tonight, this is strictly about a, a reappointment to the board.
So can we discuss it before we make this motion?
You can discuss just the reappointment to the board.
But can we put this on a hold until we discuss?
That's entirely up to y'all, you can table the, you can table the item if you want.
I already made the motion, so.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so it's been seconded by Terry.
Motion to table?
No, I made a motion to accept her reappointment of Janet Moncries.
So I'm gonna call for a vote. Post?
No.
Love?
No.
Bates?
No.
Gunner?
Aye.
Shaw?
Yes.
Who am I missing?
Sprouls.
Sprouls?
Aye.
Oh, good gosh. Okay, then I'm going to, because there is so much conversation, I'm going to vote no, so that we can table it and bring it back, and you can discuss it at the next meeting. I'm gonna put it back on the agenda, I'm not tabling, I'm putting it back on the agenda. That way you guys can think about maybe finding some people that want to sit on the board, it would be nice for the city council, you know.
Can I discuss, say something now?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you have, you want seven, and you have four, why are we having issue about getting the other two?
I don't know that we're having issue with, I don't know that the Parks Board, I don't know that they've reached out to very many people, I don't know how many applications are in, that's something that needs to be found out between now and the next meeting.
It's been in the paper, you know, we're not getting any response from that.
It's probably been in the paper for a month, or a month and a half, or, do you know how long, Bud? Yeah, maybe two months.
It's an ongoing thing.
It's been a long time.
Or came to city council.
Or became city council, right, two of us right here.
Two, two of them in this room became.
Two of them, right here.
So it's just, it's.
Who are the members of that Parks Board right now?
Margen Latham, Janice Blahouda, Janet Moncrie, well, Janet Moncries, and Michael Eichler.
Yeah, the new guy.
So we're gonna be down, so we got three now.
Now we're down to three.
Not much of a board.
But you can't do anything.
All right, well, well, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, I can't wait to see, it's Chief Green is gonna make a presentation for some new equipment that he's not asking for, he's already received.
You don't have to vote him.
Vote no.
So several months back, the, well, it was quite a while back, as a result of the South Texas school shootings, the governor's office opened up grant opportunities for ballistic shields. So we applied for that, and, or I requested five of them, and they only gave me enough money to buy four, but, hey, it didn't cost the city a dime, there's no cost share or anything, so we were awarded a $20,000 grant, that purchased four of these shields here.
Pull one of them up.
I want to know how it works.
It doesn't work. Lights work? Oh my God. I gotta carry this and shoot?
I'll be honest with you, that wouldn't be wide enough for me.
Sorry, that's all I say. So you lie to people when you're coming to them, the idea behind this, the thought that we had is, we wanted five, we wanted one for each school resource officer assigned at campus, and one for the police department, we didn't have enough money to get five, so we, with these costs, I've got to figure, almost $18,000 for these four, now you could buy these prior to this, for half the cost they are now, but when the governor's office releases so much money, it triggers these companies to charge twice as much as they did, because now they're gonna make money, and you can't afford this money, it's a racket, but, but these are gonna be assigned to each campus, each SRO, each SRO and each campus of Bowie I C has an office assigned to them, and they have supplies in there, and different equipment, and this did cost the school and the city, they go, and then a lot of paperwork that I had to do online, but anyways, we were working on it, and we're very happy with that, and these will be issued out tomorrow to each of the SROs, and there's stickers you put the latest or whatever on, but, so they're like 27 pounds, I think, they were the lightest ones we could afford.
I pray they're never used.
I do too. But they cost, they were actually $4,387 apiece.
So are you going to take the leftover and ask for us the rest of it in the next budget to get that fifth one?
Well, they, we haven't even been paid this yet, the city had to buy these outright, and then we get reimbursed, so I don't think they're just gonna give us 20 grand, they're only gonna give us the 17, 831 back.
Wow.
I wish we could keep that, because I'd have loved to have asked for the fifth one, but.
Maybe we'll have to do a grant application against X two. Maybe they'll, they'll do, maybe they'll do it again. We do have a shield at the police department. Um, it's a lot bigger and a lot older, and the threat level's not as good as these, 'cause it's, it's been there since before I have been there.
So I'm assuming that that glass area is bulletproof.
That's glass. Right.
Wow.
Supposed to be. It better be.
Is it wider than those, the one you got?
The one at the police department's wider than that. It's for me.
Yeah.
We've, we've used it twice in the twenty-seven years I've been here. The other one, we went a house on Greenwood Street that was, the guy was supposed to be in there with a gun, and we, four of us down the hall behind this thing. But we got him, so...
Well, I know what you went through to get that, so I appreciate your time and effort.
Yes, and thank you, and, and Mr. Cunningham, y'all, and Pam. We, everybody had to log in and do their part. It wasn't just, there was a many hands involved in this city. So we're very happy to have them, and like you said, pray we never have to use them, but...
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully our schools will be safer with that.
Thank you. I still see the six dots, but okay.
Sorry. I should have warned you.
And you will.
Yeah, I think I will. Uh, do we have any public comments? That's the next item on the agenda. If not, then I will adjourn tonight's meeting at six fifty.